And I only got it out because I have to sign this. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the October 15th meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. If you will stand and join me, Supervisor Carpenter-Harris will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Before we get started with our presentations, I did want to let people know about a change in the agenda today. Under County Matters, Item Two, we had scheduled an appeal hearing regarding a cannabis distributions operation. And there was insufficient noticing of parties involved in that, so that has to be postponed. So that will likely take place at our next agenda and board meeting. Taking care of noticing so that we'll have plenty of time for the next meeting. So our apologies to those who came specifically for that purpose. And just wanted to make you aware of that as we get started. Okay, the first item on the agenda is Presentations, Item A1. Human Resources: Recognize Trinity County Sheriff's Office Investigation Sergeant Josh Ford as Trinity County Employee of the Year 2023.
So Board, as you know, we started through our HR department, a employee recognition program last year. We've been doing quarterly awards and each quarter we do an announcement out to all the employees. And each of the employees get to say certain things about the employee they're nominating. And then the department heads go through and do an evaluation and we select the employee of the quarter. This is the first time for the annual piece of it. So we have an annual Employee of the Year now, Josh, and we went through a very similar process. We had over 70 nominations, which was great. Josh received multiple nominations throughout that process. What we have for Josh today is a couple of things. We got a certificate for him, Employee of the Year Josh Ford. And then we got on this side, I don't know how it will come out on the cameras and stuff, but we got a lot of the different items that were said about Josh. And what I really like about this is this is not from like a supervisor or, you know, anybody else. This is from peers. This is from people who work with you day in and day out and what they've said about him. So that's really neat. And then we've got a plaque emblem for you, you know, some desk art for you for that. So I know there's a couple of folks that would like to say a few things. I'll bring the sheriff come up, but just on behalf of the county, Josh, thank you for all you do. It is felt throughout all of our departments and throughout the county. So thank you, thank you very much.
Board, Chair, Trent, I just want to tell you one thing. Right now Josh is the most uncomfortable person in the world as we stand here. Josh hates to be recognized for the work that he does every single day. He is probably the most caring person that we have working for us. He cares so much for victims that he responds to every single day. Every call that he gets, no matter what the time of day, night, weekends, he gets the call, he responds, he goes out. He deals with every case as if it is the most important case in the world. And like I said, he hates to be recognized for what he does. But every, every single agency in this county calls upon him, whether it be Adult Protective Services, whether it's Child Welfare, whether it's the District Attorney's Office, the courts, even our public defenders. We respect Josh for the work that he does day in and day out. And I respect him as well of all the peers that voted for him throughout this year. So thank you, Josh. Congratulations.
Board, if you will, could we get a picture over here?
Stay there, camera. Now, if we can get one with... And then, the next one will be the rest of the... Oh, yeah.
All right.
Now we'll go more short away and then peers up.
All right.
Nice, Nate.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Not gonna say anything?
That's too cute. Nicely done. Thank you. I will say, I've mentioned this to Leila before too, but I appreciate since you've been here and Trent, that you have really upped our game in terms of recognition and engagement through your team. And I love seeing that and the quarterly nominations and then this our first. And to have it be one that was so unanimously supported by so many people, it's just really great. So thank you for making it happen. Okay.
I'd just like to give, see in the room, Leila, for the, all the stuff that you do too and recognition of the people and the Spirit Days and all that, I think that plays a big part in the morale. So thank you very much.
Okay, item number two, Clerk of the Board, Adopt a Proclamation Which Supports Human Response Network's Domestic Violence Candlelight Walk on October 18th, 2024. And would you like to say something first?
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Supervisor Lutwiler and members of the board. My name is Jolene Jones and I serve as the Program Coordinator for Victim Services at the Human Response Network. On October 18th, we will be hosting the Domestic Violence Candlelight Walk in Weaverville. This event is a solemn but empowering opportunity for our community to come together, to raise awareness about domestic violence, honor survivors and remember those who have tragically, who have tragically lost their lives to this pervasive issue. As you are aware, domestic violence remains a serious concern in our community, impacting individuals and families across all demographics. During a reporting period of 2023 to 2024, 400 survivors assessed or accessed domestic violence services at our program. The Candlelight Walk serves as a powerful public demonstration of our collective commitment to end domestic violence and support survivors. By standing united, we aim to send a clear message that domestic violence will not be tolerated and that resources and support are available to those who need. In addition to the walk, we are requesting your support in issuing a proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Trinity County. This proclamation would underscore the importance of addressing this issue and reaffirm our community's dedication to preventing domestic violence and supporting those affected. We are deeply grateful to Supervisor Jill Cox for attending and supporting last year's Candlelight Walk. Thank you very much. We would be honored to have the Board of Supervisors participate this year, whether it be in attending the walk, speaking to the community or officially presenting the proclamation. Your presence and endorsement would be greatly enhanced, would greatly enhance the visibility and impact of this event. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I will read the proclamation of the board. "A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, supporting Human Response Network's Domestic Violence Candlelight Walk. Whereas domestic violence is a grave and pervasive issue affecting individuals and families across our community, regardless of age, gender or background. And whereas domestic violence encompasses physical, emotional, psychological and financial abuse, creating an environment of fear and suffering that undermines the safety, dignity and well-being of countless individuals. And whereas the dedicated efforts of local organizations, advocates and survivors play a critical role in addressing and combating domestic violence, providing essential support and resources to those in need. And whereas raising awareness and fostering community solidarity are vital components in the fight against domestic violence. And such initiatives help to educate the public and encourage a collective response to this issue. And whereas the Candlelight Walk event serves as a powerful symbol of hope, remembrance and solidarity, bringing together community members to honor survivors, mourn those who have lost their lives and support the continued efforts to end domestic violence. And whereas this event also provides an opportunity for community engagement and dialogue, reinforcing our commitment to creating a safer, more supportive environment for victims and survivors affected by domestic violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity do hereby acknowledge and support Human Resource Network's Candlelight Walk to be held October 18th, 2024 and recognize the Candlelight Walk event as a crucial occasion for bringing awareness to domestic violence and honoring the strength and resilience of survivors. Be it further proclaimed that the Board encourage all community members to participate in this event, to stand united in the fight against domestic violence, duly passed and adopted this 15th day of October 2024 by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity."
Thank you.
So moved.
Wait a second. I will second.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Hi.
Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Goken?
Aye.
Chairman Lutwiler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris, you had something you'd like to say?
Yes, I just want to say thank you for the efforts in doing this. There is supposed to be really no safer place than our home. And as hard as it is to believe, I think that, or maybe not as hard, this is a situation that almost everyone in this room has probably encountered in one way or another, whether it was against them or someone they loved or something they witnessed as a child. And domestic violence is everything. As Jolene mentioned, it's everything from elder abuse to child abuse to spousal abuse. And I can't even begin to count the amount of shaking women that I have hugged and held and men who know that they're never supposed to strike back but have faces covered in scratches. So it's not just one side or the other. It hits, it hits homes, probably in the house right next to you. And so hurting people hurt people. And my prayer for today is, and for that walk, for the walk when it happens, is that we as a community can seek healing and heal each other and heal ourselves so that our homes can be safe for everybody that crosses over the threshold of them. So thank you for the work that I know goes into this. It's valuable and it's important.
Very well said. Thank you. Jolene and Sherry, would you join us? It's interesting. It's moments like these with the recognition this morning and this a little more somber piece right now that I think about so few people participate in these events, these board meetings and watch them and so forth. And before getting actively involved, I didn't either. And so so few people get exposed to this kind of information about how amazing our staff is, both when they're being recognized for all the great work they do throughout the year and then just that heartfelt, hard, hard work to help support our community and the breadth of it that we just don't know because we're not exposed to it. So anyway, I'm thankful for the work that's done and hopefully more and more people become aware of that. Okay, item three, Final Presentation, County Administrative Office. Receive a presentation from the County Administrative Officer acknowledging the county seal created by Trinity High School students.
All right, Board, you will recall a few months ago, we did some renovations in this room with the carpet and chairs. And part of that time, I had kind of spoke about a project that you see here today that we were going to work with the high schools on. I'm very, very grateful for that opportunity to do that. And the plan is to put our county seal up that has been so phenomenally produced by multiple organizations. The school, we'll run through those here in a second. But to memorialize it and put it up on the wall behind you so that when the camera's on the board, which is most of the time during the meeting, we'll be able to see that. Now, this was no easy feat. There is multiple classes, three that were involved with doing this. It had to be done in sequence and phases, you know. I came up with a very simple idea in my mind. But it is obviously, it doesn't, it doesn't always equate into simplicity when you do that. But we were able to give them a seal and, you know, give it to them in the right format. And then they were able to put it into all of the really cool high-tech products that the school has and then turn this into a project for some students to produce this. So both Paul and Tabitha are here and there's one more that's not, right? Is there another? What's that?
We're missing a student and a teacher.
Yeah, so do you guys want to just introduce and run through it real quick or do you want?
What?
All right, I'm Paul York. I do wood shop and buy advanced wood class. Did the, took the logo and the graphics and set it up to engrave it on there so that it could then be painted by the art class. And Tabitha, a letter explained about the metal.
So we were given the image and Jack Winiya took the image and created a cut file, which actually took a very long time to do. And we ended up cutting the piece in two phases. And then the painting was kind of tricky because we had to weld it and get it painted without the paint falling off. So it was a lot of trial and error. This was actually a very complicated project. And then Sonia, she's also an ag mechanic student and an art student. So when Paul's class cut the wood part, it's actually, I guess, etched or what do you call it?
Engraved.
Engraved. It's laser engraved. And then she took it to art and painted the image. And then they both kind of like had a part in getting it assembled and a lot of trial and error, but they worked very, very hard on it. And Kyle Haley, the art teacher, was a lot of help with kind of our troubleshooting, both the paint on the wood and the metal. So it was a lot of work.
It's amazing.
So thank you, thank you for that. I also have a coin, a thank you coin, which has the same emblem on there. All right, Board, do you be willing to come up and do a picture with the?
Yeah, yes, we will. Just one second. I know Supervisor Cox had something she wanted to say.
I want to honor you kids because we can sit here and say, this beautiful product took hours, which it did. But the tenacity for you to continue hour after hour after hour. And I could guess there were some moments when you thought, why did I say yes to helping with this project? And you had, you stayed in the game. And now this, we will look at this as will generations to come. Thank you for doing that. And I hope that it really kind of stands in your minds and in your hearts as you move on into your careers, whatever it is that you choose. It's moments when you don't give up that it feels like, I wish I could find that exit strategy. And you don't and you get to the shining moment at the end. I just want to highlight that for you and say thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, we are moving now into public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule a matter on a subsequent board agenda. Do we have public comment in the room?
Chairman Lutwiler, Board Members Lisa Wright-Luiston. I'm asking for your support in the form of a letter for a cannabis restoration grant application that's being prepared by Cannabis for Conservation for a sediment reduction on cannabis farms in priority northern watersheds grant application. This has made it through the first phase, the pre-application phase, on a larger scale. And the reviewers asked for it to be scaled back and done in thirds because of limit, a limit of $15 million on each grant. Currently, there are approximately 15 farmers in Trinity within that application. The rest are in Humboldt that could benefit or the, I'm going to say their land could benefit. The money will not go directly to the farmers. It would be used to execute their lake and stream bed alteration agreements. And this is very impactful for water quality, to reduce the sedimentary discharge and issues that have resulted over time, particularly with, you know, with legacy cultivation. These are regulated farms, so that is required. But what we're finding is that many of them, after identifying issues that maybe they created or previous owners created, it varies, is that they don't have the funds to do these larger projects. Some of them involve, they need a railcar bridge over area or stream restoration. A lot of it is around culvert replacement to ensure adequate sizing to withstand a 100-year flood event. That's kind of the threshold for Fish and Wildlife LSAs. So this would, we expect about $5 million to come into the local economy from the execution of these projects. Contractors will be able to bid on it. They'll be encouraged to use local vendors. But you know, the overall picture is really, you know, the impact on the improvement of the environment and to, you know, continue to work towards being good stewards for this industry. So what I'm asking for is a letter of support. And I know it got here late and it came from the applicant preparers a little late as well. So we didn't make the agenda, but I did send out soft copies. And I'm asking for you to individually consider that letter of support. I believe that there are projects in each of your districts. I even, I particularly checked one and two because you don't have as many farms. Need to double check on District Four. But of course, three and five where the majority of the cannabis operations are currently have projects in that group. So ask for your support and I appreciate your time and open to questions either now or you can reach me, you know, via email or cell phone as well.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Lisa, how many of these applications are split between the 15 in Trinity County and Humboldt?
I believe in this first round, there's approximately...
In this first round, there's approximately 40 total and 15 being in Trinity County. So just under, just over a third. Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. 15 million is the max and that's what this first round of applications is going in. So I just gave it a third and said 5 million. But it will depend on the actual projects, you know, how much is required to be spent on each. But at a minimum, I would say 5 million will come to, into Trinity. Flora, as a subcontractor, I'll just mention to help with the coordination. But the main recipient is Cannabis for Conservation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Susie, you'll help us with the template for those.
Yes.
And the request is, I believe by tomorrow, the deadline to be submitted is the 18th. So if supervisors are planning to move forward that staff, then that's a timing we'll be trying to work on.
I'll prep them before I leave the office tonight and so they will be ready for your signatures no later than tomorrow morning.
Thank you. No, because this will all be individual decision because it's not on the agenda.
Thank you.
Other public comment in the room?
I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Okay, thank you for that. We will move on to reports from department heads.
Good morning, Chair, Board, Tim Saxon Sheriff. Just a couple of small issues to bring up to you today. Number one, after the budget had been officially signed, we have been going through that budget, looking at what we have been allocated. We are going forward on recruiting and hiring two correctional deputies at this time. They're still in the process, so we're... They're still in the process. So we're very hopeful to get two of them in the near future into our facility. You'll see on the agenda today that we have an issue with a boating grant. We were successful this year. For the last several years, we have been applying to the state to get some, to get a grant for a new boat. We have three boats right now, just to let you know. One is a 2003, one is a 2004, and our newest one is a 2011. So we were very, very happy to be approved this year for a grant. So if it passes today, we are very excited to be able to move forward and hopefully by next summer have a brand new boat. In which case, we will be able to get rid of one of the older boats and return it to the state. That's all I have to tell you. So thank you very much.
So Tim, when you, when you get a new boat, sorry, sorry to interrupt you. Would you get a new boat, you, you return one of the older boats to the state? You don't auction it or anything?
No, it goes back to the state and then they dispose of it.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any other department heads online perhaps? No?
I have them.
CAO Tuttle.
Thank you, Chair. Couple items. So I attended the Trendell and Prism Board of Director meetings, October 2nd through the 4th. Just as a reminder and refresher, Trendell is the risk management JPA that includes 12 small rural counties. And they handle the majority of our insurance claims. Prism is the larger JPA who handles the claims over 300,000. And both directly interact with the insurance carriers, that those actual insurance providers. There was good strategy discussion about risk management focus areas on a number of different topics and trainings to reduce such risk. Jail health and the overall, you know, jail operations were a focus area throughout the, the larger Prism JPA, which represents 40 of, or 40 or 41 of the, of the counties throughout the state. And, you know, jail operations is obviously a liability that they are looking at and how we can reduce those. There is an effort that they have started, this is a long term, probably the next 18 months or so, to see if there is something that they can do to provide the, the liability and operational actions that some of the private companies are doing now. There's just a very small number of private companies that can come in and, and help with jail health operations. But it's not cost effective. So this JPA has developed a team to look at possibilities in, in the future. But again, this is a long term, long term effort, but one we will stay engaged with as appropriate. And then I also did invite both the JPAs and the insurance provider to come present to the board at some point in time in the future. So we'll see if, when, when that can fit into everybody's schedule. Wanted to write a quick update on the, the library. I understand there was maybe a few questions floating around in the public about why we were advertising for a part time library position. As you recall, with the, with the budget adoption, we had to make some changes in the overall library budget and overall library operations. So we will no longer have permanent full time positions within the library. We'll have part time positions. So the position that's currently being advertised is for that part time position to operate the Weaverville Library for up to 18 hours a week. That position closes on the 18th. Shortly after that, we will have interviews and hopefully bring somebody on board in a, in the part time capacity. And then just as a reminder for probably more of the public, but the Weaverville operating hours will be, will be reduced down to 18 hours a week. Hay Fork, nine hours and Trinity Center will remain at four hours. I've had some very positive and fruitful discussions with the, the friends of the library. And we have come to an agreement on the MOU and that will probably get signed later this week. On the animal shelter update MOU, we've got a meeting Thursday this week to go through some, just some of the final actions for that one. And we're, we're moving through with, with that one as well. And we're also partnering up with the, with TASSA, who this MOU will be with. And on the 18th, we're, we, they are submitting the first, first grant, if you will. So that process in both fronts is, is moving forward for those MOUs and we'll have those finalized here shortly.
Great.
Just for everybody's awareness, Senator McGuire will be in town tomorrow. There's a few different engagements with the county. And we'll have some good, good discussions there, I'm sure. And then, these are always fun to do. In this day and age, we seem to get lots of negative comments, but it's always nice when we get the positive comments. So on the 10th of October, in the Clerk Recorder Assessor's Office, Lisa got another nice note. All very good, helpful. And the specific comment was nice to see. It was handwritten out in cursive, if you will, which is also a lost art. She was very willing to help despite the fact that I did not have all the information needed. So again, just, it's always neat, neat to see these and a shout out to Lisa and the Clerk Recorder Assessor Elections Office Department. And that is all I've got for now. Unfortunately, you get to hear me a few more times later in the meeting.
Thank you, sir. All right. Members of the board, let's start with Supervisor Frazier.
I had no out of county travel. I did attend the Post Mountain Community Plan Workshop on the 9th. It was well attended. I don't have an exact count because there's too many people and moving around too much. But there's probably, I would say, over 50. So, and I think we did get some positive feedback from that meeting. So that was, that was a good thing. Other than that, the only other thing I would have to report is that tomorrow I have a Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting. And it's been relatively quiet.
Supervisor Cox.
I have no out of county travel to report and needed to take some personal time over the last couple of weeks for Family Matter. And that's the time spent on the ad hoc and report.
Thanks. Supervisor Gogan.
Tim, was that the PUD meeting on Friday?
No.
That was the.
No, it was the community plan meeting. I, I attended the community plan meeting, I believe it was on a Wednesday night. And I did not, I wasn't able to attend the Friday PUD meeting. I was on the 10th.
You know, it was well attended. No, no idea. All right.
So make sure you bring your mic up when you do your.
Okay, was it my turn?
It is.
All right. I was at a PATH meeting earlier this, a couple of weeks ago. They did have the dental bus come into town from the 9th to the 12th at the Veterans Hall. I hope that went well. It's the beginning of what we hope will be improved K through four dental help, which is lacking a lot in Trinity County. They also gave out $30 gift certificates for anybody who traveled from outside of Weaverville to come and, and visit the bus and have their kids have their teeth worked on. So I think we can continue to do that and hopefully that builds on itself. And we find out our kids are getting a little bit better dental care up here in Trinity County. On Thursday last week, I had a community meeting with the Mung Community of Post Mountain and some of Hay Fork, talking about the upcoming LAFCO situation that they've, they've gotten themselves in as far as maybe not being able to become a independent district any, any longer. So we went over all the, the things that are lacking and the things that were, that need to be done to, to come into compliance. They were spelled out very clearly by LAFCO. I think that the Mung Community of Post Mountain has kind of realized that the, the rubber has hit the road up there. They have one year to kind of rectify things. So they pulled together pretty well. I think they have a semi-good grasp on it. I wasn't there on Friday when LAFCO was actually there at the PUD fire hall there in, in Post Mountain. So I hope attendance was good there. And it looks like we got a pretty good start in getting them back on track up there. I don't, I don't know what they would actually do if this next fall bunch was not successful for them. They needed to be in this time that they, they kind of rose up and stand on their own two feet for their, for their community. There was also a party in the park about a week or so ago that had to do with Measure M. Some of the Congress still candidates are coming up and a few other things. It was well attended, a lot of fun. Hay Fork Community Park is, is beautiful. And thus the reason that they're trying to pass Measure M over there, which is a $20 increase in the park tax, which may or may not pass. Also attended a candidate's night, I think the night after. And it was for seven, I think seven people were looking for two or three spots on the PUD board. They were all there interviewed as a regular candidate's night. And also some congressional folks were there trying to become congressmen. So it was a lot of fun watching all those people go through all those stuff that, that I normally have to go to as a candidate. So it's, it's great to be out in the audience and watch them get their, get grilled a little bit. They all did a great job. I think there's some really, really good fresh minds that, that are available for PUD. And I think fresh minds are, are always welcome. So best of luck to all the candidates there. Coming up, we will have you having an NCRP meeting on Friday. I'll be attending that Friday. And then I think I will continue on to look at the dam removals up on the Klamath River and look at the Klamath River from a different perspective than I normally see it down in Wichita Beck. And see what the causes are and talk to some of the folks up there with the, some of the supervisors of Siskiyou County, who will be at the NCRP meeting with myself on Friday afternoon in Crescent City. So I'm looking forward to that and, and traveling up to look at the, the dam removal, which is an important thing to myself and Heidi and, and the TMC Board and Trent in this board. So that is about all I have.
Hey, thank you. Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Yes, as Liam, Liam mentioned, he will be attending the NCRP meeting in Mystead on Friday. It's my son's birthday. So sometimes you gotta, you gotta do what you gotta do. But in the same, under the same umbrella of NCRP, I, we had a Zoom meeting for the, putting together the, the illegal cannabis and negative impacts to the environment ad hoc that both Liam and I set on trying to form a, we, we've been working very hard at creating, I guess, a mission, if you will. And that's going to be before the NCRP board on Friday to look at, you know, any adjustments that may need to be made in order to try to work together cohesively on getting some of the negative impacts to the environment taken care of from abandoned grows. And then some of the illegal ones that have been shut down. So I'm looking forward to seeing that hit the ground. It sounds like a movement is kind of beginning. We've kind of hit a tipping point. As was mentioned earlier in public comment, that, that recognition is, is, is hitting the ground and we need to make some changes. So I'm glad about that. I attended the Trinity County Collaborative Tour on, two Fridays ago, over from 299 to go up over Hennessy and looked at the different projects that are coming on board for doing fuel reduction. And the leaving in place some of the dozer lines that have historically been put in and then recovered and put in and recovered. And recognizing that leaving those in place will give them a greater opportunity to hold fire. So that was a very good, it was highly attended. And so it was a very good, many conversations and a very good meeting. I was very glad that I, that I went. I also attended a Coalition for Tribal Health that's looking at expanding tribal health opportunities, not only and how to serve tribal communities within Trinity County, but then had an amazing presentation from the Reading Rancheria Project that's forthcoming to build a wellness campus in Reading. It's, if all goes well, it is going to be an astounding location with everything from gardens and orchards and preventative health through all the way through surgical level help and everything in between. So that will be made available to the tribal people of Trinity County as well. So that was a very, very good meeting and presentation. There was a lot of our county folks there and I was very grateful to work beside them in conversation. I attended Zoom meetings on public lands and, and on for the, the RAC committees that I serve on in Naco. And I've registered for the Naco conference that's happening in December for the RAC on, in early December. Today is the LAFCO meeting, which I will be attending. I attend, attended the general plan meeting in Junction City on 1010, which was in conflict with being able to go to Hyam Palm. I went to Hyam Palm last time, so I feel like I should go to Junction Cities this time to keep things balanced. And there was a, a number of people there. There seems to be a significant amount of concern about how zoning is going to roll out in terms of the ability to have cannabis cultivation in, in certain zoning. Certain zoning is particularly rural residential. So there was a lot of conversation around that. And that's it. That's what I did. No out of county travel this, this week, just all, all in county stuff. So big topics, but lots of good conversations and a lot of, of people wanting to, to make improvements and move, move forward.
You mentioned, I think, what you were saying was that at NCRP, you are creating a mission statement for that ad hoc at this time?
Yeah, it's not a mission statement necessarily. It's just the outline for how the NCRP is going to support efforts for the cleanup around illegal marijuana grows and, or cannabis, sorry, illegal cannabis grows. And then also negative impacts to ones that have kind of gone out of business. You know that what we heard today in public comment is, is very similar conversation.
Could we see that when you get it done?
Oh, yes, yes. It'll be, it'll be, it's in draft form right now. And as soon as the NCRP Board, you know, we, we're still working through it. Once it gets fully prepared, then yes, it will be, it'll be made public. And it's, it's a, it's specifically an effort to, I guess, add voice to these concerns and offer a way to stand as a partner with other organizations that are trying to do the efforts on the ground. So it's, it's a really good ad hoc. There's a number of tribal people on it, multiple counties. And, and we've, the staff at NCRP is doing a very good job of capturing concerns and putting it into writing and making sure that it's written in a way that it's a really good tool to help multiple agencies with, with efforts.
And I'll just acknowledge, I think it's great. That organization, I was so impressed that one time I attended when the two of you couldn't. And that's when this subject came up. And so that was just over a year ago. And here we are where you're, you know, coming forward with a clear outline. There's been regular meetings of that ad hoc. I wasn't even sure after trying to push it to get on their agenda if it would. And so to know that it did and it's been thriving and even when they met here recently, we had staff members presenting information to show examples here in Trinity County. So it's, I know it might still seem like it's slow to people that aren't normally involved in these kinds of processes, but it's really fast in, in worlds that we seem to operate in these days.
Yes, and they've done an excellent job. Yes, and they've done an excellent job of the ad hoc and the the staff of trying really hard to make a really, really broad sweep of information. So it's not just isolated to where potential like biases could exist. It's a very, very broad sweep in the gathering of information so that it's a very holistic approach.
It's great.
I've been really grateful to work on it.
Yeah, I I think they're a great group. I think there's probably what eight, 10, 12, 14 supervisors involved in that, if not more.
In the whole, yes.
In the whole N C R P, so they are very active. Well, so we're going to see Supervisor Gore leave that group and become the Naco president later this year, which would be a great thing for Heidi. She has a good relationship going on with him now. So I think that'll be beneficial to us. But N C R P, as far as the committees that we go to are certainly the, well, we had one here and there's probably a hundred people or so here in Trinity County. And they're attended likewise throughout and they're they're a great committee that follows too on everything that they they say they're gonna do and their Nancy does a great job of running it. And we're lucky to have Heidi as as primary on that. She does a great job on both the N C R P and the ad hoc for the anti cannabis cleanup. So we're lucky that Trinity County gets to play a big part in that. And we're happy to do it.
Thank you. For District One, I had mentioned in previous meetings, but I was in Eureka last week for the Economic Development Summit where we were invited to participate in a couple of different ways. Our Watershed Center was there on the panel. I was facilitating a workforce development panel. And one of the panelists was actually someone who had roots in Hayfork and currently works with Shasta College and was talking about workforce development for very rural youth. And so it was great to see that kind of information being discussed and people engaging about it. And I followed up and have a meeting actually with Jamie Green and his principal and counselor to talk more about how we can better engage youth. The dental program that Supervisor Gogan mentioned, so Supervisor Cox and I were able to participate in that. And it was great to see what they were doing, basically free services for four days for dental care. And they have a mobile unit that literally can do everything, x-rays, all all your normal work. They said they were just not working on crowns. And one thing I will note and and Trent, if you can maybe just make a note of this for with Liz and and Justin and so forth, but they had, when we came on day one, they had about 12 of 40, was that right? 40 spots filled. And so and I know there had been communication. We took some pictures. I I got some information from them. I posted out on Facebook and based on the amount of comments and back and forth and shares that I saw, I'm hopeful that they got a lot more attendance. I did see some people say, oh, yeah, I went and it was great. But clearly, the next time we do that, we need to even step up more our engagement about it. And I know it's you know, you can only do so much and you can't lead the horse to the water or whatever. Yeah, you can do that, but I'll get there. But anyway, I think it was good. And again, for me, what I see works the best is just leveraging these various community groups that are on Facebook because they they do seem to sort of pay attention to what's there. So I'll just share that.
A few of the things that they do there or can't do there is teeth hardening fluoride. They can fill cavities. They can pull some some minor teeth. They have some, they can extract some teeth that's needed and do a full cleaning of all the kids. Some of the things that they, you know, root canals and things like that, crowns. You have to go on to your to your own dentist. But they do the majority of the things that most K through four year olds would need at this time, which is a big start to get them on the right road to keeping up their their dental hygiene and and getting their parents involved too is is kind of part of our roundabout goal. It's not just to get the kids in there, but to get the parents to to participate too. So we're working on that. It's we got a long road to go, but this first one was successful. Thanks to everybody involved in that. And hopefully next time it will be even more successful.
Thank you. I did also attend a Lewiston Community Barbecue. I think it was just great that a new nonprofit was formed to help support some of the community efforts there. But there were hundreds of people that showed up for basically a free barbecue and just community gathering. And I I just want to applaud their efforts to build that community engagement. Community Plan Meetings, I was in Trinity Center for their meeting last week, well attended and a lot of engagement. And then tonight is the Lewiston Community Plan Meeting and tomorrow night is the Weaverville Community Plan Meeting. So I'll be at those functions as well. I am following up on C O Tuttle's work. I am been invited to meet with the Friends of the Library tomorrow, so I'll just sit in and see if there's anything I can add value to or just take away to better understand, but I'm just accepting the invitation. On Friday, I'm meeting with representatives of the Siskiyou Economic Development Corporation. They have people that are working to bring some of their services to individuals and businesses in Trinity County. So I'm just trying to make sure I better understand what that is. So we have a Zoom session set up with three of their folks on Friday and I'll report back out. The Naco Internet and Telecommunications Committee that I'm a part of is meeting this week on Wednesday. And I just wanted to highlight that our executive director of our Regional Economic Development Organization, S K E D, Ryan Richardson is the executive director. He has been working with local leaders on a USDA grant for rural community development. And we just had absolutely tremendous response the other day when, like Lisa was looking for some letters of support, we ended up with letters from congressmen, senators, P U D, all fire departments all over just really quickly came forward. And I think that really plays a big role when when people are considering these grant applications and you have that breadth of support, I think it can really help. So I appreciate everybody's help getting that word out and very quickly getting those letters put together. And that's it. Thank you. You know, one comment I'll just make, it is sort of interesting when we're doing these updates. We do try to stay somewhat focused on county related matters. But one thing that you might find surprising is we normally can't have just open conversations about the things that we're sharing right now. Because only two of us can be talking about something that is about that it could be a board matter. And so we might talk to one person about something that's going on, but here is where we actually can hear more about things than we can out in general public, which is kind of strange, but understand the reasons for it. Make sure we do government business in the public eye. Okay, reports from ad hocs. We have First Tribal Relations Supervisor Carpenter Harris. Did you have anything?
Nothing new, just still moving forward.
This is it December dates?
Yes, it's the last meeting.
The very last meeting of the year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's we're planning to have them back on the December 17th is what we're hoping for?
Yes, for full presentations.
Okay. And at that point, they'll be talking about how how we might be able to help them with their efforts to get federal recognition as well as other kind of kind of support and coordination with the county. Is that correct?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, and our tourism partner funding ad hoc.
Good news as Chair Lou Weller reported out about Siskiyou E D C and their involvement with Trinity County and helping businesses here. A member of that E D C, Heather, whose last name I will not butcher, has agreed to participate on our review panel. So now we have three economic development professionals sitting in with Supervisor Gogan to provide that local perspective. And those meetings are all teed up to happen next Monday evening and the rubric has been created and approved by those folks and we're ready to move forward, anxious to hear the projects that folks want to put forward. Pleased to have that professional perspective on if we can't pay for everything, what order would they recommend that we pursue various projects in in order to achieve best outcomes as far as we were to spread these out over a multi-year sort of plan? How would we get the best return on investment? So really appreciate that, that we're making certain that the dollars that we put into our tourism development are being spent as effectively as possible.
Great. It's it's exciting, I think, to see us taking a more focused approach to this than we have in the past. Okay. We good for consent calendar before we take a break? Consent calendar. These items include routine, non controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Okay. Did anyone have an item they wanted to be pulled for discussion? Entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion to pass.
I will second.
So motion to approve all consent calendar items as presented?
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser? Weller?
Aye.
Thank you.
Troubled.
I was a little slow, but that's all right.
Okay.
May I may I say something, Chairman Lou Weller?
Please.
I just want to say thank you to, I look at this list of names of people who are willing to serve and be, you know, active citizens. And you sign up for these boards and, you know, life keeps happening to you. And so I just am grateful. It takes a lot of people to run our mountain communities and I'm so grateful that all these folks are willing to step forward and serve on these on these different boards and just keep everything in a state of accountability. So thank you for that.
Chair, I honestly, just at this last very second, saw a name on here that does give me pause and I would ask that we that I would ask for a motion to reconsider. That would be acceptable.
Okay. And so does he just need a second for that? And then does it take a four fifths vote? And then we can reconsider what we just decided?
I'll second for discussion.
So
on D two, Krista Gogan, I would
And I guess I should just, do we need to have the discussion about the specific matter just to approve?
Nope, right now we're in discussion.
Just to approve.
Okay.
So we can
So just to rather or not
Well, but if you want to make a case
I was just gonna give you my reason why I would I would assume if that Supervisor Gogan would like would like to recuse from item D two.
Which one is it?
Item D two.
Douglas City Community Service District, Krista Gogan as an appointee.
Sure. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, so let's have the vote to reconsider.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
A recuse. Well, you can you can vote on the race.
To reconsider.
Yes.
Chair Ben Lou Weller?
Aye.
Thank you.
And so now would it be appropriate if we had a motion to approve all items other than D two, is that the
The motion to approve all items except D two.
Second.
All right, now we can all vote on that, including Supervisor Gogan.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Lou Weller?
Aye.
Thank you.
You would like to recuse yourself?
I would.
Okay.
So you have a motion to
I will wait till Supervisor Gogan vacated. I will move to approve D two as presented.
I will second.
And just for the benefit of those in the audience that maybe think this seems kind of crazy. Basically Supervisor Gogan's wife is one of the people that was being approved through that process and normally you would want to recuse yourself if there's some sort of personal interest. And so even though we're going to come up with the same decision, it is a cleaner, more ethical, fairly presented decision. So that is the reason that we're going through this and thank you Supervisor Fraser. You may have been a little slow, but you're the only one catching it. So thank you for that.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Chairman Lou Weller?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, that's pretty funny. Hey, under county matters. These items include nonroutine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Item E one is County Administrative Office. Adopt a resolution establishing Weaverville, North Carolina as a sister city to Weaverville, California.
Thank you, Chair. I will go ahead and introduce this one and try to address any questions. So for those who might not know, there is another town called Weaverville in Weaverville, North Carolina. Often times when you throw in Google Maps or something along those lines, it often comes up first. It is a similar rural mountain community as Weaverville is in Trinity County. They have been recently devastated by a hurricane. Unfortunately, it's not the last hurricane we've been dealing with, but it's one from from two ago. Hurricane Helene went through there as it went up through Florida and went up through a lot of the eastern coast states. It had some devastating impacts once it got up to North Carolina, especially the northern parts of North Carolina where Weaverville is. There was a suggestion from a community member to maybe reach out to them and establish some form of sister city relationship. Based upon that comment, a a number of people kind of got engaged and and took some action. I was able to reach out to the mayor of Weaverville, North Carolina and honestly not expecting a quick reply to an email based upon the severity of the circumstances they're going through. But very pleasantly, in about less than six hours or so, he had sent a note back and said, we would love to establish some type of of partnership, sister city relationship and benefit, if at all possible, from each other's actions and and experiences. As as you know, we as a community have gone through, you know, forest fires and floods and and our fair share and, you know, winter storms and our fair share of disasters here locally. And we have quite a few established processes through through O E S and and other mechanisms to help facilitate not only the the actions during the the event, but also in the recovery modes, which is where Weaverville, North Carolina is right now. So a resolution has been drafted up to establish a, you know, a relationship, if you will, kind of formalize some of these thoughts in in writing and the mayor has agreed to, you know, once we establish and formalize this resolution, he's asked for a copy of it. He will do the same thing on on their end. And then we will see where this relationship goes. We will see what type of opportunities are out there. You know, it is across country from us, but like I started off with, there are many similarities within that small rural community. Right now is the typical time of year back there where you would be having lots of of tourism activities associated with the fall colors of leaves changing. And unfortunately, you know, they're not having that right now. The the hurricane strength winds basically changed the the landscape back there for at least this season. And they're still dealing with things like, you know, powers and flooding and, you know, to some of the getting water back on to some of the basic life necessities. They're not really looking at at tourism, but they will be financially impacted by this fairly significantly. You know, as any community is after a natural disaster. So the, the thought is we would, we would establish this relationship via a resolution. And then we would share it with them. And then there is a, some other activities that the county will help facilitate, not necessarily lead, but help facilitate like some type of fundraising activities. I don't know exactly what those will form into right now, but I imagine we'll get together a, a group and, and something will, will come of that. And then that information will be shared. And then it can be also be, you know, whatever activities we do can then be received on the end of Weaverville, North Carolina at the appropriate time. So this is just really kind of the, the beginning of some potential actions and potential relationship that we could have with a sister city. There are some, a little more formalities of this when you do some research, there's like a sister cities international organization that if you go through and you can meet some of those. Some of those are intended more for a country or a, a city within the United States than a city with, from outside the United States. But there are also organizations that facilitate, you know, sister cities within the United States. So we, we will work through some of that. Like I said, some of that's unknown right now. We don't have to have all that formalized at this point. This is just a, a acceptance and a desire of the board to move forward with activities as they would present themselves or as they are, they would become available to us. I personally think there are some, some fairly significant items we could engage with them on, you know, not only with this disaster, but just other things in the economic arena, in the tourism arena, in a very similar, you know, small rural mountainous type community that has its own set of struggles within a state of North Carolina, you know, that has its own challenges with, you know, financial situations with different communities. So again, lots of similarities, but I, I believe this is a, a really unique opportunity. It's a neat opportunity. Unfortunately, it's, it's developed because of a natural disaster, but oftentimes, you know, we, we come together and we grow together and we learn more in the face of adversity than we do when things are, are easy, if you will. So with that, I'll, I'll pause for any questions or any other direction.
Is this, is this relationship supposed to be reciprocal? We do something for them, they do something for us? Or is it because they're in the situation that they are now that we're going to reach out and try to, try to help them?
To, to start with, you know, we would probably be reaching out, we have reached out, but we would be, you know, seeing if there's any, you know, donations that are needed, any specific things that are needed. You know, there, there's obviously local groups and, and local things that, that they need and, but maybe there's, there's something that they can identify that there would be, you know, residents of, of Trinity County and Weaverville that would be interested in, in contributing and helping out in some way. I think that's the immediate, you know, that's probably within the next now to thirty, forty-five day range. And then there's going to be some other, some, some longer term efforts, you know, once they get reestablished, like right now, they're, they're not even, you know, having governance meetings and structures, you know. They're doing it on an ad hoc basis and as needed basis, but they've, they've really shut down in essence their, their normal procedures from a, a, a town, county structure process. And they're solely focused on the, the recovery efforts. As we know, that can take a long time, depending upon what state resources they have available. When you start talking about FEMA and others, there's a lot that goes into that. There's a lot of time associated with that. Coupled on top of the other significant disasters, you know, that, that this, this United States has been facing. That time could just get extended out. So beyond that, then it's, it's really unknown at this point in time. But based upon the initial conversation with the mayor, it would definitely be a reciprocal type of effort going back and forth. But what that would entail, what that would grow into at this point, I, I have really no idea.
Seems like we might be able to learn something from them right away. And what is their population?
They're right at about five thousand.
Five thousand, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Yep, so very, very similar type of, of community as Weaverville, you know, California is.
Their, their elevation is about the same. The population's very similar. Their aerial photos of Weaverville, North Carolina look a lot like Weaverville, California. And I think as you mentioned, Trent, is that, you know, this is, you know, the adversity is what has brought us together to help them in the, in a tough situation. But it, it really, these whole sister city, sister town, in our case, type approaches are really more about just connecting and engaging and establishing relationships and broadening our horizons. And, and so like you, I look forward to, you know, beyond just immediately, how can we help? And acknowledging that like we've experienced, the help is needed beyond thirty days. But looking forward to beyond that. And, and you could tell by the mayor's response to your email that that was what was in his heart as well. And I just wanted to mention, I think you actually had said something about this, the, the public came, but then I remember when the email came across, you, you kind of wrote like, did you read my mind? Did you, did you watch my board update? So did you want to share a little more?
I had shared a couple of meetings ago that when I returned from the RCRC convention, there was a presentation about the small community called Rikuzentakata in Japan, where after the two thousand eleven tsunami devastated that community, two years later, a small oyster fishing boat washed up onto the shores out of Crescent City, where it was discovered by a, a patrolman who was having a run on the beach. That later was then put into the hands of high school students who wanted to clean up the very barnacle rate laden boat. And they returned it to the community of Rikuzentakata. And out of that gesture of kindness, which was enormously meaningful to such a ravished, small community, there came then a sister city relationship between Crescent City and Rikuzentakata that then became a relationship between the high school students who over, I, I picture the course of several years. Students have traveled back and forth and formed incredible bonds of connection and community. Beautiful that it's an international relationship because they've learned a great deal about one another's cultures. And so I, I do want to say it's fortuitous that Weaverville, North Carolina shares the town name of Weaverville. I really view this as Trinity County developing this relationship with Weaverville, North Carolina. Just so happens that it's the name of this one community in Trinity that shares or that kind of forges that bond. But we see this as a, a county wide effort.
And it might help to understand, because I think nobody's hearing about Weaverville, North Carolina in the news, but you probably have been hearing about Asheville, North Carolina. And, and Weaverville is basically a suburb, if you will, almost town of Asheville. And so that's, like you said, it's, it's a bigger picture thing. But anyway, so, and, and I think CEO Tadel could just can confirm, when we talk about fundraising and support and so forth, we're not talking about allocation of county funds. We're talking about, as you said, the county perhaps facilitating efforts to get fundraising things going by the community that we would then support. And certainly we could maybe have, we have an amazing OES organization that could potentially provide some, you know, guidance or something, I suppose, but no county funds.
Correct. No, no, no county funds, no real, you know, quote, staff time dedicated to this. But just helping, helping facilitate more from a, a leadership perspective than anything else.
Great, thank you. No other questions and we can have public comment? Any public comment in the room? Online?
I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Okay.
I would move that we adopt the resolution establishing Weaverville, North Carolina as a sister city to Weaverville, California.
Any discussion?
I just think this is a really good idea. I think it's going to be really impactful for our kids to be able to have pen pals maybe or even just have the opportunity someday to travel there or host exchange students or something like that would be really fun, expanding horizons. Our nation is giant and having spent a significant amount of time in the South, it's a very different place than it is here. And I think it would be very fun for, for that relationship to build over time. And then also I just know for myself that when, you know, something is happening that's really, really difficult. Sometimes people can't necessarily give you anything or hand you anything, but they can just sort of look at you and say, I see you. And it's in that acknowledgement that you are struggling, that you gain strength, knowing that somebody cares about that. So if nothing else comes of this, except for us looking into the community of Weaverville, North Carolina and saying, we see you, then they'll know that they're not in this by themselves. And the hand may be across the country, but it's held out to them. So I'm happy that this is happening.
And I would say in that vein, that I graduated from high school when I grew up in a community about the size of Weaverville. And so you do go kindergarten through high school with the same kind of cohort. And a woman I graduated with lives in Weaverville, North Carolina and has for decades. And this has reestablished the connection between her and myself. And so already one piece, and it has been exactly that, when I have been texting with her to say, we do see you, we do understand, not to that degree, boy, when you see pictures of their community. Well, I guess I can't really say that, Dan, you probably do know exactly what that feels like. It's just that yours was ashen and not mud. But the mud certainly followed. I think there are some beautiful things to come. And then the difficult things that we all have to work together to contend within our community now, it really is nice to have something positive to focus on.
Right, call the vote.
Supervisor Frasier?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Lew Weller?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, and I see some people that came in afterwards and didn't hear that. But item number two, which was an appeal hearing regarding a planning commission decision on a commercial cannabis distribution location permit, that has been postponed until the next board meeting. There was some additional noticing that was required, so that will take place during next week's, or the next board meeting.
So that, we are sure on that, seems a little ambiguous this morning that we might have it in the upcoming meeting, so it will be next board meeting?
It will be the next board meeting. We have plenty of time to do the noticing that needs to be done.
Thank you.
You bet. So the last item on our county matters agenda. Item three, County Administrative Office, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Trinity Code Title seventeen to establish the Lewiston, Mountain View Cannabis Opt-Out Area Unknown Fiscal Impact.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to go ahead and take this topic as well as I did during the Planning Commission meeting. Also, as I did during the Planning Commission meeting, I'll kind of state why. As you recall, at some previous board meetings on this topic, the request was made to, you know, expend the least amount of cannabis division staff time on, you know, these, these opt-out requests. So we've honored that to the best of our ability. Drew has spent a little bit of his time on this, but I've tried to take the bulk of it myself, between myself and Margaret, and working through, you know, the drafting of this proposed ordinance amendment, and then working through the Planning Commission and working through any other, you know, activities that, that we've had to do. So as far as recollection for a little bit of history and, and why we're here. So this board, so there, there's been a number of, of times this board has talked about or we've discussed the legacy ops out, opt-out, if you will, from the twenty twenty-one timeframe. There was one in Hutton Valley, one in East Branch, and one, this one that we're going to talk about today in Lewiston, Mountain View. They were all received in, from September twenty to October twenty-one on, in, or we, we had some topics that, that we discussed and this board adopted an actual resolution, two thousand twenty-four dash zero three seven, establishing some specific criteria so we could actually have an application for an opt-out area. Of the three opt-out legacy requests that we had, only one came forward and complied with Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero three seven. So on June twenty-first, a package was submitted and accepted from the Lewiston, Mountain View Opt-Out petitioners. Based upon that and based upon the direction from the board, I took that, I took that application forward to the Planning Commission on the twenty-sixth of September. The Planning Commission voted three one with one abstention to move the, the ordinance amendment forward for board consideration. There was only one request from the Planning Commission and that was to add the complete date, so to add twenty twenty-four to the April sixteenth date in Section Three, Item Six, which has been done. And that is in the, the ordinance amendment that is before you today for consideration. This opt-out request did meet the criteria, as I've said, in, in Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero three three seven, which were a detailed parcel map submitted that, that shows the specific boundaries, a minimum of sixty-five percent of the parcel owners signing the petition, a specific reason for the opt-out. And then the application had to be submitted within the ninety days of the resolution from April sixteenth, which this one was. So the, the staff report has all of the various documents included in it as attachments. And I will take any questions the board may have at this time.
Any questions of CEO Tadel at this point? Okay, then we will open to public comment.
Thanks to the board, Chairman Lew Weller. Yeah, I was at the Planning Commission meeting and we brought forth some reasons why we wanted to be opted out. There was one thing that we didn't bring up, and I thought about that when I was going home that evening, that the entrance into the, excuse me, Mountain View community is a, is a one, one road entrance. It goes back into the canyon and ends. If any of you remember, and I'm sure you do, the Campfire Paradise, California, that literally took the town down. And one of the things there that I remember when I worked for Cal Fire was that access and egress from that particular community was not, not well. There was only two ways out, was the skyway and down through by the college. And so that left a lot of people more or less stranded, a lot of problems with traffic. Incoming responders were balled up with traffic, all this type of thing that you really don't want to have happen when you're responding to an incident of that type. And I think that even though of a Mountain View is not as big a community or areas as Paradise, it still is in the same situation where the top of the little valley goes back up and dead ends into the canyon up there and there's no access out except the way that you come in. So I, and it, and then what happens in that is respect, you have people trying to get out, you have first responders trying to come in, you have a narrow road or dirt road. And it, it just adds to a lot of problems. And I think that maybe the board could keep that into consideration as they decide on this matter, because I think it is of relevance and importance. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other public comment in the room? Okay, how about on, oh, yes.
Chairman Lew Weller.
Chairman Luke Wiler, Supervisors Lisa Wright, Lewiston. I'm not saying that this neighborhood is suitable for cannabis cultivation, however, the method that we're using is inappropriate. To continue with this carve-out mentality. Just because it was the way it was originally done. Before CEQA was a requirement, when it was still uh CEQA exempt activity, doesn't mean you keep on making those mistakes. It's like telling you, my kid's upset because he can't do what his sister did. Well, that doesn't mean it's right. She didn't do it, you know correctly. And that's kind of what what we're doing here. There's, we have Flora, the company I own has four permitted um farms. And carve-outs do not prevent in that in that area, carve-outs do not prevent illegal farms, right? So what you're doing is you're pushing people out of regulation that protects water, protects from odor, protects from noise. So we're in perpetuating the idea that all cannabis is unsafe, it's to be feared, it's harmful. By continuing to carve out these areas. The other thing that we aren't doing here is although the. Uh, programmatic EIR considered that opt-out, there might be opt-outs in the future. And that's what you're allowing is the consideration of that, it did not exempt analyzing the activity of the proposed carve-out. And that is to reduce the allowable use, uh, the allowable area now down to a more concentrated one. By, you know, you're concentrating basically effects now into a smaller area because you're reducing available land use. That was contemplated as being available during the P E I R. This absolutely requires an initial study. Using the mechanism that's being used here, that there's some notice of determination when there's no findings in fact, is the misuse. Of the CEQA regulations. I understand that you're likely going to do this, but I want to point out kind of the error, I believe, in continuing along this path. Um, there are other options, right? You can rezone. Your parcels so that cannabis isn't allowed, R one, R two, R three. You can do HOAs, right? I want to control what my neighbors are doing. You need to join this HOA. I can tell you what color you can paint, what you can do um on your um on your property. But this is not only grabbing those smaller residential parcels, it's also pulling in egg forest parcels. Where there's agricultural activities, including a goat farm. So again, we're making cannabis as something very, you know, it's different to be feared. Legal cannabis is so highly regulated, more so than our food supply. We've got to stop perpetuating that it is a harmful, dangerous activity. It's the lifeblood of our local economy, so um. I ask for your consideration in those matters, especially in ones moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howdy y'all. Andy Wakefield, Mountain View, want to thank you for representing us, the Planning Commission. Forgot to thank you. Thank you. Uh, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, y'all know my position, but uh. The CEQA reports, those, you know, those ports aren't perfect. We've had residents that have run out of water. So uh. But uh uh, I'd like to urge not only the planning commission, but y'all as well. To go out and visit some of these uh questionable or in question areas that you're all voting on. I was also at that planning commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. And I just, I I I. I find it a little, I get, I get, you know, just. Upset to the fact that, you know, you make decisions just on looking at a piece of paper. Maybe it's easy to go home and get to sleep that night instead of going out and looking at these areas. The effect that they have on the the lives of those people in these little residential areas. It's not a commercial area. Was accused of making a blanket statement and one of the other planning commissioners. They also, uh, by by the chairman, uh, my topic was guard dogs. And it's not a blanket statement when you have to put yourself in front of a pit bull running at your family. Not a blanket statement. An actuality, it's an actual incident that I had to go through. Or when they find, or when they find themselves on my porch. So. And then, and then, and then. To say that just some two sentences after that to bring up Reefer Madness. Goes to show his ignorance and his irresponsibility of not coming out there. Like I said, come out there, look at these areas that you're voting on. Those are responsi- that that's a responsible way to go about it, not looking at a piece of paper. You know, that makes it easy for you all to make a decision sometimes, or at least to get to sleep that night, so. Appreciate your uh, your time and. Finally going to come to a vote, I guess, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone online?
I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Okay. That, I will entertain a motion. We could then have discussion around.
I'll move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay. Uh, discussion?
Just for clarifications and ordinance.
And ordinance, yeah, but so, yeah, I was reading the wrong portion of mine.
I did just want to know, uh, based on some of the public comments that we, uh, I think CEO Tadell explained this. But when we took this approach, um, a while back, we were trying to deal with the fact that. We had been moving forward in an environment in which the general plan was silent on commercial cannabis. That we had um had applications in, if you will, for uh requests, I'll call them maybe better. For opt-outs, much like had been approved in the past, but they had been um pretty much ignored for a couple of years. And so we said, okay, let's establish a process because there had never been one, as been pointed out. So we established a process. We limited it to only those three communities who had submitted something in the past. And uh, this is the only of those three communities that acted within the timeframe allowed. So there are no more that can happen unless the board chooses to implement something else in the future. But the concept was that now we would rely, as we always should have, on the general plan. And the the normal planning and zoning processes to make these kinds of decisions. So I look forward to when that happens, um, but for now, that's my frame of reference on how I'm making my decision today. No further discussion, we can call the vote.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you do.
Couple of things to ask. Um, so this will be the only one we do prior to the general plan, is getting this one done.
Well, it's the only one that we can do unless the board makes some other option available to the public, because there is no other option available to the public right now.
Yeah, I guess this is for Margaret. How do HOAs stand up in comparison? I'm just thinking about legality for the county, if each individual neighborhood. Got together and said, uh, we have an HOA that you can't put a basketball courts or grow legal or illegal cannabis. Um, since we're not doing much for the legal part of it here, I was just wondering if. We could kind of kill two birds with one stone on HOA. Um, we'll say on my road where I live, if there was an HOA on my road that banned cannabis, legal and illegal. Would we be a little further ahead, the county not be liable, and they hold up pretty tight in court?
So HOAs do hold up in court. Um, they are a valid form of regulation of a local community. They're not something that the county would be involved in. That would be the community banning together, basically contracting amongst themselves as to their expectations. Um, so that would not be something as a county we would get involved in, um, but they are a valid form of of regulation.
So do you feel that with the. Less county involvement, that we might be less liable in something? That may come down the road that we're not expecting?
The county having no involvement would mean no liability, corrects? Um, so I mean, that's that's the easiest way to answer it. Um, but the other question of whether there's liability for the county to impose regulations, um, I I can't answer that.
One of the gentlemen, you talked about one way in, one way out, and at the fire safety council meetings that we've been having. There, we did come up with ingress and egress to almost all of the the neighborhoods that we addressed. Did you guys not come up with a good, it didn't happen for you guys?
I I want to keep the discussion focused on making this decision.
I wanted to just make sure that, um, you know, these people weren't in harm's way for for any reason at all. So I think that might. Trump what you just said, so.
If you want to have discussion with them afterwards, that would be great.
No, make sure that they're okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes. I. I do believe that opt-out is not necessarily the greatest way to move forward with this. But I think that we need to, uh, uh, at this point in time, it's. The only route we have to protect these communities that are, have been engaged. Until we can get through the process of of. Basically, it's going to have to be general plan update or a major ordinance overhaul to get to a a position where we can. Do this in another form or fashion, and we've had issues with the major ordinance overhaul. So I I would support this as at least as a temporary fix to a ongoing. Uh, problem that has been a problem for a long time.
Thank you. Okay, that we can call the vote.
Supervisor Koken?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Luke Wiler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we have uh completed our open session. Let's see, on the last. County meeting. Uh, we had a closed session item. Trying to remember, did we? We did, yes, okay, so um, uh, this was item F one, Government Code Section five four nine five four point five C. Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation number of cases one, uh, and there was no action taken. So with that, we will move into closed session. Thank you. Oh, on the, I'm sorry, public comment on the closed session. Does anybody have any public comment? Thank you. Online?
I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Now we're done. Thank you all.